Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the Everybody Counts virtual tours. We are so grateful to be able to talk with you all a little bit about the positions that we're offering through Everybody Counts with our business partners Kroger, UPS, Ford, and GE Appliances. And we'd like to extend a huge thank you to the Kentucky Chamber of Commerce Foundation for allowing us to connect through this platform in their Bus to Business program. So without further ado, we'll go ahead and kick it off. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Price. We are so excited for today's session. We're going to kick things off by a brief welcome video from Everybody Counts, kind of detail what this program looks like. So Autumn, if you want to go ahead and play that first video.
Everybody Counts is a new partnership between Jefferson County Public Schools, Evolve 502, four of Louisville's largest employers, local leaders, and community organizations. This program aims to have every senior signed up for higher education or already placed in a good-paying job.
Congratulations, JCPS seniors. You're this close to getting your high school diploma. So what's next? Well, we're here to help you with those decisions. There's a brand-new initiative from the Kentucky Governor's Office in JCPS called Everybody Counts. Here's how Everybody Counts works. Every qualifying 2022 JCPS graduate would be guaranteed a job with one of Louisville's largest employers or get two years of free college tuition. With Everybody Counts, UPS, Ford, GE Appliances, and Kroger will hook you up with a job when you graduate and meet their qualifications. If you want more education, Evolve 502 will help you go to Jefferson Community and Technical College or Simmons College of Kentucky for free. If you want the training to go into a high-demand field like IT, healthcare, or construction, Work Ready Kentucky will get you the financial assistance you need. So even if you think you know your plan after high school, check this out. Go to this website or QR code for more information, or check with your school counselor. We're here to help you plan your future and make sure that every JCPS graduate counts.
This class in JCPS is one, the first one, the only one, and I would say maybe the only class in the nation where the district and the community is promising them full tuition scholarship and a full-time job at one of the companies that are pillars in our community right now.
What a great video and initiative this is. I know we are so excited to partner with this. My name is Zach O'Bear and I'm a project manager with the Kentucky Chamber of Commerce Foundation, and I'll be hosting us throughout the session today. So from here, we'll be hearing from each of our different employers on the session. And if you all have any questions for the employers throughout, please feel free to engage in the chat, and we'll be sure to engage and ask the employers after their videos. So first for today, we will be hearing from Ford, and we have a quick video to play from Ford, and then we'll have a time for question and answer afterwards. Again, as a reminder, I know many classrooms have their teachers who are on with their classrooms. If students have any questions throughout the session, please feel free to put those in the chat, and we'll be able to ask our employers after their videos end. And we'll now play the first video. Thank you all.
Okay, Steve. I think everyone gets it.
All right. Thank you, guys, for a great video. I know we have a couple of questions we're going to ask now. And Autumn, if you'll go ahead and unshare your screens, we can see our panelists here. So first question I have for our Ford team is, can you all just kind of explain a little bit more about what types of jobs students through Everybody Counts might be doing?
When you come into Ford, you'll be hired as a temporary full-time employee, and you will be doing the exact type of things that you saw in the video. You will be assembling the vehicles.
Awesome. Great. And I know Carlos, we talked a little bit this morning. So when students apply for these jobs, are they for sure going to be working the manufacturing side or from the Ford end? You know, what types of careers might we be looking at?
Right now, we're hiring for the temporary full-time positions. So in that role, you will be assigned to any position within any department. We have a super duty trim, our S U trim lines. Additionally, we have our body shops, paint shops, and our stamping and chassis lines. So as a hire, you will be expected to be able to maneuver within multiple departments and work in different areas. So expect some movement within your career background.
Great. No, that's awesome information. I really appreciate that. I think one thing too, and this actually came from a student who submitted this question through registration. They're asking if you all can provide some information, just general info about career benefits.
Right now, our starting wage is $1,667 an hour, and it can go up to $1,959 an hour depending on what assigned crew or shift you're assigned to. We offer at KTP, we have an A, B, and C crew. A crew works Monday through Thursday. On day shift, B crew works Tuesday through Friday nights. And our C crewship works Friday and Saturday mornings and Sunday and Monday nights. LAP.
Yeah, LAP, we're at the plant down by the airport. KTP is the plant on the Chamber of Landline, just everybody we're in. LAP is running a two-shift operation right now, so it's either day shift or night shift, Monday through Friday. And I think what the student was asking about, is there a career path past assembly? Absolutely. We hire a lot of our supervisors out of the hourly ranks. And depending on your education, Ford is a local company, and there's just no end where you can go depending on where you want to go.
Yeah, that's fantastic. I think too, a lot of students are considering, you know, they're starting off here, but what can they do moving on from there? So can you all touch a little bit more on to, so first of all, if students are considering this job right now, what types of skills would they be most successful if they have these skills already?
Oh, skills are actually required. You just would need to come in, you'll be trained on what position you'll be doing. It's repetitive work. You'll be working in a team environment. Also, you'll be standing, walking, doing some bending. So you won't just come in and be still. You'll be moving around. So and pretty much you'll be trained on what job you'll be doing. It'll be repetitive. Most of the work is, you know, repetitive. So real simple instructions on your job. So don't feel like you come in and be lost. You'll be trained.
And to add to that, a lot of our, we don't expect a lot of our HRs to come in with automotive backgrounds. So you just need to be able to have, be able to work any assigned schedule, be flexible, and perform manually, able to ascertain amount of dexterity. As going to Bubbles' point, we will be standing for periods of time and performing manual tasks.
Awesome. Okay, a bit of a fun question for each of the panelists. Can you all touch on how you got started with Ford?
Yeah, I started at Ford. I'm hitting on my third year anniversary in May. I was actually looking to go back home. I'm from Chicago, and I saw an opportunity here. Applied for it, did some research on the company in Louisville, this particular plant. And saw this as a great opportunity, interviewed with my HR manager, my supervisor, and our salary supervisor. And was able to get on. It really was a great experience overall. The onboarding, everything was just fantastic.
Okay, I, 20 years ago, I was actually recruited by Ford out of college. And I've got my master's in human resources from Michigan State, and they were on campus. So I interviewed with them. And I was impressed by their professionalism, and since I was looking to go into labor relations with the relationship that they had with their employees, it was super positive, and that's what drew me to Ford. And it's been a wonderful career.
So 27 years ago, I applied through the post office card for Ford, and I came in in paint department. And I can tell you, when you come in, I was so happy. I got the nickname Bubbles because I came to work smelling everything. So it's not all bad. It's all bad. You just have to be patient and know that you're working for a great company, and you're building the best vehicles in the world.
Yeah, that's great. I think too, really just to emphasize the point that you all have developed careers out of working with Ford. So for students to consider, as you're looking at all these different job opportunities today, this is not just something that you might do for a couple of years, but you can really consider all these opportunities as your career path, that you could be working here for many years to come down the road. I think we have time for one last question. This came also from a student registration, and it asked, does Ford pay for college? And if so, how does that work?
Ford does offer annual tuition assistance of $6,000 for the Invest or Grow Us program. So that's practically within the skill trades, the tuition programs that we offer here. There are opportunities that do pop up, and current employees are allowed to apply externally. And we also post these positions externally, but we look internally first.
That's great. Well, thank you all from the Ford side for the great video and information. Again, if any students have questions, Carlos' contact information is in the chat. We will also show everyone's contact information again at the end. And Autumn, if you would not mind showing that QR code one more time, it looks like a couple of students are looking to scan that. So if we can put that QR code up on the screen, and any students who want to scan that QR code, now's the time to go ahead and grab that. I think we have the QR code on the next slide, too.
And another thing to note is that we are hiring from both sites, our Louisville Assembly Plant and our Kentucky Truck Plant. We will go ahead and post in the chat after we're done that link to that email address.
Right. So if you do have a plant preference, we do use the same job posting for both plants. So there's email addresses, KTP hires or LAP hires. So just shoot us an email to the plant that you prefer, so make sure you get everyone.
Awesome. Well, thank you, guys. I really appreciate it. So to keep things moving, we're now going to watch our next video from our next employer. So that'll be UPS. So Autumn, if you want to go ahead and queue up that UPS video.
Hi, everyone. My name's Bailey.
Autumn, we still see the PowerPoint. I know it opened up a new browser there. Give us just one second. I think you might have to unshare your screen and then reshare it.
Hi, everyone. My name's Bailey, and I'm a current UPS. Yes, sir. Today, I'm going to show you around Worldport. Come on in. Okay, so now I'm going to walk you over here to this big white tent. This is where you're going to come on your first day to meet your trainers, and they'll tell you where to go. All right, so now we're all ready to go inside, so follow me on in. So since Worldport is on airport property, you're going to have to scan your ID to get into the guard shack. In the guard shack, you're going to walk through and go through TSA. If you've ever been to an airport, you're probably familiar with this process. Now, let's get on the tram and let's talk. But first, coffee and donuts, duh. So you're probably asking, Bailey, why are we riding a tram right now? Well, did you know that UPS Worldport is 5.2 million square feet? That's the largest hub in the United States. At Worldport, you can start in the hub, the ramp, freight, or in an administrative position. While we're on this ride, take a look at this super cool time lapse video for a typical night in the operation. Right now, you can get hired on day shift making $20 an hour or night shift, which is what I did, making $21 an hour. These part-time positions range from about 11:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon, and 11:00 at night to 4:00 in the morning. Okay, guys, now you kind of get a glimpse of the operation and know what we do at Worldport. Now, let me tell you a little bit about my own experience with UPS. I graduated high school in 2017. I wanted to go to college, and I didn't have a whole lot of money. I knew my mom and dad weren't going to pay for my school, so UPS was the perfect opportunity for me. The program I decided to go with at UPS was Metro College, which pays 100% tuition if you go to U of L or JCTC and work third shift. And I got all kinds of bonus money that went straight into my savings account. I know what you're thinking. With all these benefits and third shift, I sacrificed a lot of sleep. But that could be the furthest thing from the truth. I had the same life as everybody else. My schedule was just a little bit different. UPS has a promote-from-within policy. I became a supervisor, and this is not uncommon to see student workers become supervisors within their first year of employment. Yay! Congrats, everyone. You have successfully completed your virtual tour with UPS. We hope you consider taking advantage of all of our great programs, just like I did. This is just my story. Check out these guys. There were definitely times that were tough. There were times I didn't want to go to work. I worked at night, and I was moving boxes. On top of school full-time, that can be a challenge. But looking back now, on the other side of it, I would do it again, hands down. From Metro College, I received $60,353.90. My number's pretty big. I'm very proud of that number. I think that's a big testament to UPS and to me.
It's hard, but you got to push through it, knowing that it's going to come out on top. It's a great feeling. Man, you can't beat that. With UPS Metro College program, I saved $26,441.50 on my tuition. Thanks to the Metro College program, I just bought a house a few months ago. I like sports cars. I had a list of cars that I was going to get, and I walked into Chevrolet, and I got the first one on my list.
The money I earned through the Metro College program was a little over $46,000. I actually just bought a car, and a lot of people are very surprised when I tell them that I have no debt from college. I tried to do more afternoon-evening classes, but other than that, it was just like being a normal student. I still got to be a part of a sorority. I was on the equestrian team. I still went to classes and had a presence on campus. It's a hard change at first, but by the end, it becomes almost natural to work at night and sleep during the day. I hope I can be a testimony to show that you really can have a balance between work, school, and whatever social events or clubs you want to be a part of. I'm still here to tell the tale, so it went perfect for me.
Using the Metro College program and working at UPS, I saved $62,110. You can log on to upsjobsky.com to learn all about our education assistance programs, and you can learn about our career pathways as well. I know, I know. There's so many packages to choose from. Interested? Scan this QR code to be contacted when it's time to apply. Hopefully, you can find your total package because at UPS, everybody counts.
All right. Thank you all again for a great video. I've been loving these this morning. So kind of to kick things off too, can you all go ahead and touch on what types of jobs might students be working at at UPS?
Yes, great. Actually, at UPS, you can work so many different positions. You could be a package handler. That is, you could be moving packages from loading to unloading to sorting packages that weigh up to 70 pounds. You could work out on the ramp. That's outside, working with the aircraft or the freight facility as a forklift driver. With both of those positions, individuals have to be 18 years of age. But we also have administrative jobs as well. So we have a plethora of jobs out there that allow individuals that can work part-time, they can go to school, and they still have a social life as well.
That's great. I think one thing I noticed too, Emily, you're shooting basketballs in the office in that video. Can you touch on what's the culture at UPS like?
Yeah, so we are a very inclusive and diverse workplace. You know, we have, we hire everyone. We have our transitional learning program. And so that is for employees who have disabilities. We also have our international community job program where we hire employees from, you know, the application process all the way up to the operation in their language. So, you know, we just, we are very inclusive.
Yeah, and to touch on that, we also pour into our employees at UPS. So like I mentioned in the video, we have a promote-from-within policy. So I actually got promoted to a frontline supervisor in my last year of college, and after I graduated, I'm still here. I moved up within the company. I'm actually utilizing my degree now with UPS.
Yeah, and actually, I started fresh out of high school. I went to Fern Creek. Shout out Fern Creek. And I actually got promoted within five months of working at UPS. I was just a little kid. I had no idea what I was doing, but they really just poured into me, and I, you know, they developed me.
And working at UPS, I started, it's going to be 29 years, and I started out in the operation and was promoted after six months. So there's so many ways to grow within the company, but it's a great way to get through school, to work, to go for a trade, a certificate, a degree, whatever you choose to do. But the one thing I will say is, we're all here. We're all still at UPS because we love it, and we do enjoy the culture. And everything about UPS. And the biggest thing I want to shout out is because we do have a great open door policy. Everybody has a voice at UPS and you will be heard.
Yeah, that's fantastic. I think that really makes a big difference in knowing that people have access to you all to ask those questions. So can you all touch on again, the same question we asked Ford, if students are looking into a career at UPS, what types of skills would make them successful there?
Yeah, so you actually don't have to have any skill coming into UPS. You'll be trained on how to load, unload, all of that stuff. But actually, we will develop you with ourself. You'll learn skills throughout working at UPS that you can utilize within your job, college, and even just everyday life. One of the things that I really benefited learning from UPS was time management skills, being able to balance work, school, and a social life.
That's great. And one other question I know that came from our student registration, what general info can you provide about the careers and benefits at UPS?
So we, starting with the pay, we pay $21 an hour working our night shift, 11:00 PM to 4:00 AM. These are part-time positions. Our day shift is 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, paying $20 an hour. And so I'm going to get into the overtime because I feel like this isn't something that people think about. But after five hours of working, you're going to get time and a half, which is $31.50 an hour. Okay, so after eight hours in a day, that is $42 an hour. And that's if you're working the night shift. Of course, it's going to be a little bit different for the day shift. But that's a huge amount of money to be making fresh out of high school per hour. I mean, and it's a part-time job, remember that. And so we also have our benefits, which is live medical dental vision and prescription coverage for free after nine months for you and your entire family. We also have education benefits. So Bailey talked about the Metropolitan College Program. I myself graduated from that or participated in that program as well. And so I know Lee did the Earn and Learn Program. We have the Kentucky Loop Program, the UPS Loop Program, which is a benefit of the Metropolitan College Program. So, you know, we just have so many different opportunities and benefits that you can get with UPS.
Yeah, that's great information for all the students. And I think we have time for one last question. So for each of the panelists on here, all these high school seniors that are listening to all these job opportunities today, what advice would you give them as they're looking at what their next step's going to be?
I'll touch on this. I have been at UPS now for five years. I started right after high school. And, you know, one of the things that was counted into my head in high school is that I had to have it all figured out. I had to know what I was going to do. So I went into school going for, being in the healthcare field, and that's what I wanted to do. And then shortly after working at UPS, I said, I don't want to do this. I want to stay at UPS. And I made a career out of it and I'm still here and I'm not done yet. I'm still going to keep pushing. I'm still going to get promoted. There's just so many things that you can do at UPS and any company, really. So my biggest advice to high schoolers is don't sell yourself short yet. Just keep an open mind and see what you can do and look at all the opportunities that are right in front of you.
And one other thing, if you want to make great money, work part-time, go to school, this is the place to be. I will tell you that. To graduate debt-free and to make the money you are part-time, that is fantastic. And like Bailey said, you don't always know what you're going to do. But this is a great way to test the waters because guess what? The money's not coming out of your pocket. You're going to work hard at UPS. It's a physical job. But there's so many gates. And that's like shouting out to Fern Creek and different ones, but, you know, I'm in charge of the school-to-work program. So there's a lot of seniors on here that are doing this program as a co-op right now. So shout out to you all. You all do a fabulous job, so.
Yeah, and I would say my biggest piece of advice is, again, just like Bailey said, you don't have to have it figured out. I would say, think about the long run. Right now, of course, you want to think about, what do I want right now? Where am I going to make the most money? Blah, 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 right? You have to think about what is going to be best for you in the future. Do you want to work for UPS for four years and, you know, get your degree, however long it takes you to get your degree? Graduate debt-free, work part-time, which is a great schedule for a student. Or, you know, do you want to kind of go for something that is full-time or maybe you make a little bit more money? And maybe you don't get as many benefits in the end. And what I mean by that is, you know, I did not want to work at UPS. When I was in high school, my dad told me, I'm not paying for your college. You're going to have to figure it out. I did not want to work at UPS. And then August, right before I had to start at U of L, I was like, well, I better figure out how I'm going to pay for this. So, you know, I really had to kind of think about it. And it was actually Lee who interviewed me when I started. And, you know, here I am still, almost six years later. And, you know, I've made a career out of UPS. We all have. So again, you don't have to have it all figured out. Every stage of your life is going to be different. So just kind of, you know, I was undecided for two years. Just go with whatever you think is going to set you up for life. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, thank you all so much. This has been a great quick panel we have here. So I want to say thanks again to UPS for the great video and information. Cassandra's information is in the chat if you all have any further questions for UPS. And we will have that information coming. So thank you all again from UPS. And Autumn, if you wouldn't mind, can you put the QR code up for UPS one last time?
Yeah, look for our posters in the school. That's going to have the QR code as well. We also have a Hiring Fest on May 21st if you want to go ahead and apply to Saturday. So definitely look out for that on our social media, @upsjobsky on Facebook and Instagram.
Perfect. And here's that QR code. If anyone needs to scan that, I'll leave it up here for just a second. And to go ahead and introduce our next employer, we're going to be hearing from Kroger next. So give it another quick second here on the QR code. Okay, Autumn, if you want to go ahead and queue up that next video for Kroger and we will hear from them. Thanks again, UPS.
My name is Tyler Martinez. I've worked for Kroger for nearly 10 years now. I started out as a cashier. I've worked in drug GM as well as fuel, and now I work in the division office. Currently, I work in technology department. I assist with presentations in the laptop hardware and software and also assist with store orders.
My name is Janelle Malone. I've been with Kroger for two years. My career path was starting as a pickup associate and now I am a qualified pickup lead. For my job, I shop in the store for the customer's order and I car side, which is taking their order out to them when they arrive at the store.
My name is Brandon Weddle. I have been with Kroger for three years. I started out as a bagger and then I moved up as a cashier. Then I went to dairy and now I'm in the meat department as a meat specialist. In my current role, I assist customers with any questions that they have. I fill the case and I also set the seafood and butcher shop daily.
My name is Amy Welker. I've been with the Kroger Company for over 27 years. I started as a cashier. I went to customer service, went from customer service to pharmacy, became a certified pharmacy technician. My current role, I am the Region One Health and Wellness Operations Specialist. My current role, I use my certification experience in pharmacy to assist in my 24 pharmacy teams in staffing, training, inventory, anything else that they may need. And I also work with the customers to make sure that they're taken care of.
All right, another great video. I'm loving these. Okay, Gina, that's awesome. And I think one of the biggest things that stuck out to me watching that video is that there is so much more career opportunities at Kroger than what you might think. So can you just touch on what types of jobs are available for students? And what types of career opportunities does they advance on in their pathway? Is it letting you, is it all muted there? Gina, can you hear us? Might be having some technical difficulties there. Give us just one second. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to GE's presentation and then Gina, we will come back for your Q and A here at the end. We should have some time there built in. So if you all have any questions for Gina, we can try and answer them in the chat. And then we will work on getting Gina so that she can hear us. So give us one minute here. Autumn, if you want to go ahead and queue up that next video from GE, we'll go ahead and play that one.
Today, GE Appliances is excited to announce a new investment in our Dishwasher Super Site in Louisville, Kentucky.
The new product line and support areas also feature a lot of new technology. We have over 30 advanced robots that have come into this facility to support the parts and processes and have enabled us to launch a state-of-the-art product.
And we're very excited because this adds jobs, over 100 jobs in fact, to this line alone and provides more opportunities for our community. So we're also very excited because it's a new platform and a new product.
Really, the impetus behind bringing this line to life was being able to bring a long-door, higher-capacity dishwasher to more people in the marketplace. It has a great long-form door, simple electronic control, and amazing wash-and-drive performance.
This is now truly a world-class plant that will increase our capacity. And the reason why that capacity is so important is because we have more demand on our dishwashers than we've ever had before. In fact, people are using their dishwashers a lot more in this time of COVID. This $80 million investment in the Dishwasher Super Site represents one of many in a series of investments that GE Appliances is making to become and continue to be the leader in the US for major appliances.
Hello, my name is Kenny Thompson. I work in GE Appliances, AP3, Sump Line, P2, Dishwashers. I get to work at 5:54 AM and we get off at 2:24. Sometimes it's overtime depending on what area you're in. It's 40 hours a week, Monday through Friday. I like working here in regards of the people, financial, the benefits is great. It's just the schedule kind of works with a lot of things. Management is nice. The additional benefits, the first day you start, your benefits is immediately. Soon as you touch the floor, kicks in immediately. 401K eligibility, being eligible for 401. The company matches that. Other stock interests as well. I've been here a total of five years. So I think on this particular line, four, three and a half, three years, four years, it is the base, the beginning of the dishwasher. You have to have these in order for it to run. So this is like the beginning, like the basic. You would need this in order for the dishwasher to run. Your motor, here's your pump, things that you need for it to get it going. I learned how to do this in training. P80 solution, kind of clockwise. Going to clamp this. Going to use this. All right, now look to finish. This clamps and flip it over. And again, depending on what model, we're a two-port or a four-port. We're in the four at the moment. We'll put that in there. And a lot of that determines on what model are we in. P80, clamp, V4. Flip it over, the four-port. And a lot of this entails, if you see me touching this, a lot of this entails with a certain pitch, you have a certain amount of time to click the clamp. So if you don't, it'll stop the line. So when it stops the line, that's when that red, red light occurs. So all you have to do is touch that and the line will keep going. So to stay ahead of the curb, you would use this in the pitch that you have in the four feet in the range. That's when you would use this in order so the line to keep moving, so you won't have to see the red bulb. In regards to training, I feel comfortable and confident because they take the time to do their due diligence to make sure you understand and learn in the process of what you're doing. First job out of high school would be great because hands-on, you get to learn. You're getting paid as you learn. And this specific field, manufacturing, if you can get this down, you can do it anywhere. And I think it'd be a great start, not only the financial gain, but again, the camaraderie, the vibe in itself. You learn a lot of things that should go along the way and it's super positive. And you can move up. You can move up. What I mean by that is, certain positions, certain jobs that you take, anywhere from first, second, or third shift, you pick up another, you know, another area, you can advance and make more money. I like working here because of positive, good people. Positive morale goes a long way. You're with your coworkers, build friendships. You're here longer here versus your own family. Just positive, good people. Positive, good people goes a long way when you're around somebody all the time. So it's great. It's great. Teamwork makes a dream work.
Awesome. Thank you guys for that video as well. I'm now going to turn over to Phillip and Tamara. I know you guys have a couple slides you guys want to run through. So we'll have those pulled up here for you.
Thank you, Zach. There'll be one more video as well. So I'm Tamara Cook. I'm with GE Appliances. I'm the external workforce development trainer. And so I am so pleased to be able to tell you guys about opportunities for you at GE Appliances. And as soon as Zach gets that slide up, I want to tell you about, since you now know a little bit about GE Appliances and you've heard from an operator on the production floor, Kenny, I want to talk to you about why to choose GE Appliances and join our GE team. And so first and foremost is your pay. Everybody wants to know how much they're going to make. So we are paid weekly. You can make between $17.17 an hour and $18.67. So $17.17 an hour is for first shift and second and third shift make $18.67 an hour. With GE Appliances, you're able to pick your shift. So we have three different shifts that you can pick from. So the flexibility is all in your hands on what you decide to do. So you can either choose to work first shift, second shift, or third shift. First shift is about 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then second is about 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And then third picks up from there, so 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So you have the flexibility. You can pick your shift. You can decide if you're full-time, which is Monday through Friday, or if you're part-time, which is just Monday and Friday only. That's a good option a lot of times for people that want to go to school so they can commit to only two days a week, but still get in full-time hours or full shifts of eight hours a day. We are also doing a hiring bonus. So right now for first shift, you can make $1,000 for a hiring bonus. Second shift pays a $1,500 hiring bonus and third shift pays $2,500 for a hiring bonus. And that's processed, you get half of it at your first 90 days or at 90 days, so three months. And then the other half, you get at your six-month mark. So that's a great benefit for a hiring bonus in there. For, you get benefits day one, as you heard Kenny say. So full-time employees get then, excuse me, medical, dental, vision, and even more benefits than that. As you heard him mention, 401K and lots of different things. We have paid vacation time and other vacation time or other time that is paid for you to take off. We have paid vacation time and other vacation time or other time that is paid for you to take off work. We get paid holidays. So 12 each year. That's a, a big deal. Not all companies get paid holidays, much less 12 of them every single year. So that's a great benefit as well. And then tuition reimbursement. So whether you decide to go to college or not go to college, there are career advancement opportunities for you at GE Appliances and that is in your student guide that you've received from your school to talk about, you know, different roles you could advance in. But if you decide to go to school, we do do up to $6,000 per year in tuition reimbursement. And that can be for any school, any college or any trade school. So it's not limited to anything. You can decide if it's business or if it's nursing. So it doesn't have to be directly related to the manufacturing field. So now that we've heard a little bit about those benefits and we can take some questions regarding those at the end, but I want to also show you how I talked about your growth opportunities. And this is Leniqua and she's one of our panelists and we can ask questions to her as well in a minute. But she's going to talk to you about how she started on the line, just like Kenny, and she worked her way up to a human resources role.
I've been with the company, it'll be 10 years in April. I started off in production. I just used to sit on the line and I watched all the moving parts in the building. And I said, you know what? Now's my time. The tuition reimbursement is super simple to use. You have your classes, you fill out all the information, submit your grades and GEA. I've been with the company, it'll be 10 years in April. I started off in production and I just used to sit on the line and I watched all the moving parts in the building. And I said, you know what? Now's my time. The tuition reimbursement is super simple to use. You have your classes, you fill out all the information, submit your grades and GEA pays their schooling. Once I got my associate's degree, a role popped up, which is my role now, the associate recruiter, and I went for that. I'm also a mother of three. Life can get a little hectic, but I still come to work and give it my all.
Excellent. Thank you for that video, Zach. So just like Leniqua did with, you can come and work with us now straight out of high school and have lots of growth opportunities and choose to take care, take advantage of the tuition reimbursement or advance with roles that do not require a college degree. And so I wanted to tell to you real quickly about the process. So once you apply with us, there are several pieces in the process before you get to orientation with us. And so I wanted to just highlight this that, because I want you to understand that there's other little pieces and you'll need to watch your email for invitations to do each of these pieces so that you can onboard with us in orientation on June 8th. And make sure that you check your email often. Some of those items are time-sensitive. Zach, if you could advance that slide for me, please. Thank you. We are having a career fair on Saturday. This is next Saturday, April the 30th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. You can scan that QR code to register for the career fair, but it's not required that you register. It will be here at Appliance Park in Monogram Hall. This will give you the opportunity to apply, interview, take care of almost all, start or complete all of those items that were on the previous slide so that you will be ready to go. If you're 17 years old, this would be a great opportunity for you to bring your parent. As some of those things will require parental consent, we are going to also offer Chick-fil-A for lunch. And you will also be entered into a raffle for some small GE Appliances just for attending the career fair. So this is an opportunity to kind of get it all taken care of in one spot. You'll be in and out in about an hour. And so we hope that you will join us next Saturday on April the 30th. Thank you. And so this is how you comply. If you can't come to the career fair, that's perfectly okay. Or if you want to go ahead and just apply, you can scan the QR code or, or draw, take a screenshot of this slide so that you can apply later at that website or using that QR code. Again, you can choose full-time or part-time. It won't ask you that when you apply, but they will ask you that in the interview process. And we hope to see you at Appliance Park. If you go to advance the slide one more time, Zach, please. Awesome. So this is where you can contact us if you need help. My contact information will also be in the chat, but this is a group of a team that is ready and available to help you and walk you through the process. And again, that's the QR code to apply. And Zach, if you're, that's all we have. If we can open up to some Q and A.
Yeah, that's awesome. I know you guys are offering free Chick-fil-A next Saturday. I mean, I might come to the career fair just for that. So I mean, that's a fantastic offer right there.
Yeah.
So I think we have time for about two questions. So the two I wanted to ask you all, the first one, can you just touch a little bit on what types of jobs would students be doing for GE throughout their career there?
Sure. Phil, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, sure. I'll take that. So my name's Phil Masky. I'm with GE. I've been here for about 10 years and I actually started from the operations floor, just coming as an hourly employee. So obviously that's, that's a potential career path for some people is just to come in into the operations floor like you've seen Kenny. But that's not all we have at GE. That's, that's one of the great things about GE Appliances is you can come in and do just about anything. We have, if you, if you're interested in computers, you could come in and pursue a path in IT or if you're really hands-on and technical, you might want to pursue a degree in, in, in maintenance or take advantage of one of our apprenticeship programs. Also, we're, we're very into robotics, as you've seen in the video. That's, you know, we're very technology moving forward. Also, a lot of people are just into business or finance or something like that. We have opportunities for that as well. A lot of people really pay attention to, to detail. They really like that, that type of work. You can get a field, a, a job in the field of like quality, something like that. And in addition, just to marketing and, and all those type of fields as well. But that's, that's something that's good about GE, like Tamara mentioned too, is you, you can pursue a degree in just about any field you're interested in. It doesn't have to be necessarily tied to operations. So there's plenty of, of people out there right now who are pursuing degrees in nursing or dental hygienist or whatever that, that is that you, that you want to do. And we support that 100%. But the possibilities are endless. I can, I can say that firsthand that I came through the ranks and I'm definitely a recipient of GE's investment in their, in their own people and the, the, the development of, of the, their employees.
And also, so to answer your, also your question of when they come in, they will do the roles that, that you just saw Kenny doing. We make washers, dryers, dishwashers and refrigerators. So you will be assigned to a plant and there is no training needed or required or no experience required, excuse me. We will train you in your orientation on a mock assembly line so that you get hands-on experience in your orientation before you set to the floor to do a job.
Thank you guys. It's awesome. I know, I want to go and come back to Kroger and I'll run short on time before students are switching in their class. So if you guys have any more questions for GE Appliances, Tamara's contact information is in the chat. Feel free to reach out to her and thank you guys again for all the fantastic information.
Absolutely. Thank you. Hope to see you guys next Saturday.
And Gina, if your video and audio is working, I think we can move back to our Q and A there.
Yes, sir. They are working.
Awesome. Perfect. So the first question I wanted to ask you is watching that video from Kroger, there is so many career opportunities. You're not just necessarily going to come there and be a cashier for your entire career. So you can just touch on what are those career opportunities that are available for students?
So we have different jobs in our stores. Within the stores, we do have management positions. So we do have department leaders that they can become. And they start out at about $17 an hour and up to like 23 or 25, depending on what store you're in and how much sales volume that they do. We also are looking for management trainees. So those who are attending college afterwards, we'll be looking for those. We also have internships when you're a junior in college where you can come and work for Kroger to see how management is. We need jobs in technology, as you all found out today with me. We have jobs in facility engineering, which were plumbers. We're looking for HVAC people, welders, refrigeration, mechanics. So all those types of jobs we have as well. And then we have jobs in the medical field and our pharmacies. We have pharmacy techs. We have nurses and nurse practitioners in our little clinics. So about any type of career you would like, we do have a Kroger. It's not just a grocery store.
Awesome. That's great. One question we got from our student registration, can you touch a little bit on if Kroger has any opportunities to help out transportation?
We do have a store that is on the east side of town and we do have transportation that will take them from like the Dixie Highway area out to like a prospect, the middle town. So we do have some opportunities there. But otherwise we don't supply transportation.
Awesome. Thank you for that. And that's definitely helpful for the students who do need that though, for, for those that are available for it. Also, can you just touch a little bit about the culture of working at Kroger? I think that's something we've learned a little bit about each company throughout the day. So what, what's the culture like working for Kroger?
The culture at Kroger is like a family because we work together so often. It's a great place. If you love people, you love helping people because that's what it's all about. Most people think we're in the, the grocery business, but we're really in the people business. Because everybody that we deal with, we have to take care of our associates at first to make sure that they can take care of our customers. It's just a fun learning experience. You get to network with not only people your age, but you know, you get a lot of wisdom from our customers and our seasoned employees that have been around. There's lots of opportunity for growth and we train you in those positions to move around. You can be in different stores. We do have 38 different banners with Kroger. So if you move across the country. So just lots of learning and if you want to move up or move out or down or around the United States, we have something for you.
Awesome. I think we have time for about one more question before we have to wrap things up. Tell us just about how you got into your career at Kroger and what your background's been.
I started out as a management trainee and I've been with Kroger for 29 years. I was a store manager for 14 years and assistant store manager for six. And I've worked the last nine years in human resources. All the jobs are like helping people and that's what I like to do is help people see them where they want to get to and help them on their path.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I'm going to go ahead and put your contact information in the chat again. And then Autumn, will you pull up the slide that has everybody's contact information on there? Gina, thank you so much for representing Kroger today and all the great information. Students, if you all have any questions for Gina, her contact information is in the chat and will also be on the screen here in just a second. As a quick reminder, if for whatever reason you didn't get to ask me your questions today, we also have two sessions next week. So next week, we're going to be hearing from UPS and Kroger and GEA and Ford. So tune in for that. The teachers have the registration information there. So if you have any questions, please feel free to register for those. Thank you all again for tuning in today. We're so happy that you got to learn about all this great information and I hope that you all find something you're interested in and we will see you all later. Thanks, everyone.